And staff is ready.
Thank you.
All right. We will reconvene this meeting. Now, at this point, we need to recognize for the purpose of the minutes that Mr. Peggy Brewer is here. And Emmanuel came late, okay? So we want to get the minutes reflected to show they're both in. So that gives us a total of six commissioners now. And at this time, we're going to open the public hearing. And those members wishing to speak before the commission on this item are invited to step forward. And I believe we have two members of the public that are actually going to speak. I think that's the only two members of the public we have here. So there shall be no thundering herd nor rising cloud of dust, but we will have our two speakers.
Oh, I can do it.
Name and address.
Ah, okay. Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the Planning Commission. My name is Kevin Burns, 2065 Alamanda Drive, North Miami, Florida, 33181. Shame on you. Shame on each and every one of you sitting up there, my friends. To sit here for the last hour and talk about a plan that should not even be in front of you right now. You shouldn't be wasting your time, or my time, or the staff's time, in actually considering this document. You are the Planning Commission. It's your responsibility to guide the city, to plan for the future. And this plan is supposed to plan for the next seven years, the global concept for our city. Yet you got your package today. Maybe if you were lucky, you got it yesterday. Many of you made recommendations into the plan, and they're not in it. You're not a planning commission, at least not on this issue. You're a hurry up and rubber stamp it and pass it on to a council who doesn't have the first clue of what they should be doing. Not because they're not educated, it's because they have not been informed. They have not had the chance to talk to the consultant, to share their individual vision for this city, to have their individual ideas incorporated and tossed around to be presented. We talked about the plan that came in 2007. I was mayor at the time. Do you know we hadn't had an updated comp plan in over 20 years? So guess what? If we're late by a month submitting it, we're still in pretty good shape. 20 years the city operated without a current comp plan, and violation of state law. That was ridiculous. We spent over a year, and we hired the same firm, the LeBron James of planning. That's why we hired them. But we told them to go and make the best plan possible. And they did. It was an outstanding plan. But unfortunately, some people in the community really got upset with the plan, thought that we were going to turn into downtown Miami, or Brickell, or Key Biscayne, or Aventura. God forbid if that happened to us in North Miami.
God forbid.
So because of some political arm twisting and threatening and all that, we compromised on some of the things that maybe we shouldn't have had. Maybe on the density and some of the height, and some of the areas where it should have been better. And that was partially my fault, because I was so intent on trying to get us into compliance with the state rules and laws, so that we can move the city forward, that I was willing to compromise. But at least we had something to work with. But you know what? Seven years has passed. Now this plan is back in front of you. And you would have thought that now, seven years of having this new plan, that we would have had all kinds of great innovative things, because we went through the bubble, we went through the worst economy downfall in our country's history. And everybody around us is on the rebound. The Planning Department has done a great job with what resources they have, the direction they've been given. I think highly of the Planning Department. I'm a big proponent, it's not what you do, it's how you do it, and it's the process. If you waste your time having public forums and public input, and yet you don't incorporate one single thing that the public wants, what did you accomplish? If your direction to LeBron James is, "Go on the basketball court, but don't shoot the ball," what are you doing? Just sit there and dribble. And that's what we did. We tied the hands of the consulting firm, where they could be making three shots, three-pointers. They could be outstanding. But we said, "No, just keep things status quo." So if we're going to do things status quo, why didn't we submit the plan three, five months ago? We need to look at this plan. It's just not about height and density. One of the other mistakes that I had made is that for a zoning change, you had to have four-fifths vote. That is killing the city. And that's my mistake, because I supported it. If a council person can get elected by the majority, if you pass the budget by a majority, if you can hire and fire the city attorney and the manager by a majority, if you all pass recommendations on by a majority, why can't the majority rule when it comes time to changing zoning? It was a mistake, and that four-fifth has to go. There was a reference made to the projects that have come or want to come to North Miami. And somebody mentioned about the Talvar project at Cosway, and how it's in limbo. It's in limbo, because you need the four-fifths. You have a council person who's dead-set against it, which I believe through misinformation. And it's killing a $40 million project that is sitting idle on six acres of prime land in North Miami. That's why it's not moving forward. That's why it's not back before the city council. It's because of the horse trading, it has to go on. Well, if you support that, I'm not going to support something in your district. And that's nonsense. The council members ought to be able to vote on land changes by a majority. Last night, I made a presentation before the city council, and I was glad to get a four-to-one vote in support of my project. Yet we had people on the council arguing with the city attorney, telling them what my customer was doing was illegal. Do you really think the legal department is going to bring something before the Planning Commission and before the city council that doesn't comply with our local rules and our city ordinances? Of course not. But the staff was berated for a half hour over that issue. So if you dare pass this tonight, and dare make a recommendation to the city council that they should look at this, it will be harmful to the city. It doesn't address the height and density in the proper areas. It doesn't... Look at that map. There are so many colors on that, there's more than the rainbow flag on there, okay? Let's mix... I looked at some other cities. They have their commercial district, one, two, and three, and four. And within your commercial districts, you can have mixed use, you can have this, you can have that. It was recommended that, "Oh, well, somebody, we can get a conditional use permit to go into particular districts." That's very complicated. We should streamline that. All right, this commercial district, mixed use is allowed. Bring it on. We're talking about taking units that, with these 5,000 imaginary units that we have, and we're trying to pigeonhole where they should go. I say put them wherever somebody wants to put them, because the market is going to determine where things get built. And one of the other things that was mentioned is that, well, nobody's asked for over 100 feet, nobody's asked for over 75 feet. The reason they don't ask is because I deal with commercial developers every day, it's my livelihood. They look at North Miami, and they say, "Oh, I can build 55 feet here, but I can get a bonus if I go through all these hoops and come before the city council and come before the Planning Commission." And they say, "You know what? Not even going to bother. Thank you. I'm going to go to North Miami Beach. I'm going to go to Bay Harbor. I'm going to go to Wynwood. I'm going to go somewhere else." Because they don't want to get tied up into the bureaucracy of trying to get a permission, which you may or may not get four months down the line. My client, it's a very small tax amendment, it's been almost four months, and the staff has worked really hard, and we really pushed it. But why would you, as a developer? Time is money. Why would you come to a city that has these hurdles in front of you and puts these obstacles in front of you? But you're the Planning Commission. And what's going to happen? You send this to the council, it's going to be read in the record. "The Planning Commission recommends that you move forward with this," as if it has your blessing on it. Well, we'll come back to looking at density, we'll come back to this, we'll do another study. It's not going to happen. It hasn't happened in seven years that this plan was approved. I say stop it in its tracks. Don't pass it on tonight. If you have to have a special meeting in two weeks, if you really want to meet the deadline in two weeks, then you do that. If you want to take out the maps and start drawing why you can't go 12, 15 stories on the most valuable property on Biscayne Bay, but yet you can go 110 feet in northwest, northeast Sixth Avenue? Why don't you go where the market drives the city, where people want to spend money? I have people looking at Seventh Avenue all the time. But you really can't do a whole lot there, unless you want many stories, you want a fast food restaurant. Seventh Avenue is a crown jewel for this city. Do you know it has one of the highest traffic counts in the county? Do you know the Burger King on Seventh Avenue is the second busiest Burger King south of Atlanta? The second busiest Burger King south of Atlanta. Do you know that Polo Tropical that we had to beg them, give them $350,000 of incentives to come build there, because they didn't want to build there? I understand it's their number-two best-performing store in all of Dade County. It's a perception. It's a perception of North Miami, where the city of no. This plan's not going to help any development. You might as well just wash your hands of it. It's not going to build one more building. Not one.
That's right.
And we're going to be stagnant. Mocha's a joke. People aren't going to come and build a nice multifamily building downtown North Miami because mocha is here. Our current mocha is not the mocha that it was. It has got to be reinvented. It has to change. And I embrace that change, but we can't build a city around a museum that no longer exists. Folks, I want to see this city grow. I want to see it. When Bay Harbor is growing faster than us, who was one of the most conservative city coming to zoning issues and density, they're building 10, 12, 15-story buildings over there, and they're selling. And it didn't sink the island. And you want to talk about water supply and sewer system? And, Mr. Chairman, thank you for indulging me, but I wanted to bring this all around. 2007, we did a plan. We had that reverse osmosis plant paid for. We had money. Remember shovels in the ground that the Obama administration came up when the economy crashed? I was with the Secretary of Energy in Washington. He says, "If you give me an engineering report, if you at least have engineering plans, we can get you the money. These are the kind of projects we want." I couldn't get the council to spend a million dollars on the engineering plans because the economy was so bad, even though we'd already spent a million dollars on the studies and Saunders and Sawyers, or whatever the Sawyer, or whatever the group's name was, to redesign the retrofitting of the plan and all that stuff. We did a little bit of work on the water plant to upgrade it, but the whole plan to move the city forward was to build the reverse osmosis plant. Because we buy a lot of water from Miami-Dade County, but we can produce our own and have cheaper water rates if we, and we can control our destiny. He who has the water controls your own destiny. Because if you have your water, you can build. You don't have your water, and you have to depend on Miami-Dade County for all your future water, you're in trouble. On one hand, our facilities, infrastructures are the best. Budget time, they're the worst. And we need millions of dollars to fix it. Tonight, they made a presentation to you, not the consultants, but just this whole general presentation. Yet look how that map is displayed. Look how that map is displayed. Pieced together on a little frame by some clips, blowing around of a map, that you're supposed to identify with and know where it's supposed to be. Come on, folks. You deserve better. I deserve better. Our city deserves better. And not necessarily any one person's fault, but if we set the bar that, "Oh, we might be able to build for 5,000 people, because if we go over that, we might have to invest in infrastructure," that's like setting the bar really, really low. I could sell 2,500 units and have them built over in the next three years of developers that came here, if it wasn't so difficult. And as you know, the developers pay the impact of their project on the property that they're building. Biscayne Landing, I mean, Solomia, is paying their complete, all their infrastructure, all that is done by the developer. So don't be scared of pushing the limits. Yes, I know we want to get compliance with and sell the plan, but we've got 5,000 ghost units. Let's say, let's put them where the market is driving it. And then you know what? Certain areas build up. Believe it or not, Wall Street Journal and Ocean Drive said that North Miami could be the next place, because people are being chased out of Wynwood already, the prices are out of control. I'm selling houses on 46th Street and Northwest Third Avenue, Northwest Fourth Avenue, for close to $400,000. If you told me that I would be selling a house down there two years ago, I told you you were crazy. It wasn't... It's not going to happen. It's not the market I'm in. Folks, I'm trying to sell every house I can down there, because that area is drastically changing, people are renovating their homes, and the neighborhood is on fire. North Miami's not on fire. We're dull. But there's no reason... We can't raise our standards. There's no reason you have to spend another breath tonight talking about all the solutions that each and every one of you have. Bill's got great ideas. You've got great ideas. Kevin's got great ideas. Everybody has great ideas. But you're going to stand here for the next three hours, talking about what we should do and not do, an attempt to pass on a plan to the council that is flawed. The density, the height, just across the board. Tonight's not the night. It really isn't. I say tell LeBron James of the consulting that you want them to present something that they think should benefit North Miami. We should find out why the direction of the staff... Staff didn't make that decision. You know it, I know it. They didn't make that decision. Somebody told them that, and their powers-to-be to, "This is what you're going to do, keep it status quo." You guys aren't up there for the status quo. You're up there to plan the future of this city. And unfortunately, the city council, again, no-faith themselves, aren't going to sit there because they haven't been asked... Because I've spoken to the council people, they haven't been asked about what their views are of the city. I said, "By the way, you're going to get a plan one night, and it's going to say, 'Here, approve this comp plan so we can hurry up and send it up to the state.'" And they said, "Well, when do I get to talk about it?" "Oh, you're going to give them about an hour joining council meeting to try to rush this through." It's not the way it's supposed to be. We deserve better. You deserve better. And you know what? Again, if you guys don't pass this tonight, which I hope you don't, I just think you should just cut our losses now, send a clear message to the upper management and to the council, when they find out, "Well, why didn't the Planning Commission? Because it was insufficient. It wasn't worthy of our time, it wasn't worthy, it's not what I..." Or you, as a council-commission person, could say, "I'm proud that I forwarded this to the city council with my name on it, recommending it." That's going to go down in eternity, or at least for the next seven years, when somebody says, "Well, why didn't anything happen in North Miami?" You were on the Planning Commission. Didn't you have a say? "Well, you see, we got Russ Drew tonight, and nobody wants to hear it." You're only good as your last results. So, my friends, you're good people, the staff are hard workers, but they can only do what they're directed to do. So let's find out who directed. Let's send your directions back. Let the council, let the consultants do what consultants do. But let's not study and re-study and put something off and come back and this and that. We have more studies than we can deal with. We've got water plant study, we've got sidewalk studies, we've got infrastructure studies, we've got studies, studies, studies. And the fact that the water plant, the reverse osmosis plant, is not even in the five-year capital plan is embarrassing. It's just unbelievable. And so, I'm going to close and sit down, but please, I have so much respect for you all, you have so much respect for yourself, I have respect for the position that you are in. But don't put this forward. Don't put your stamp of approval, don't put your name on it. Tell them that you're on that commission to make North Miami a better place, that North Miami's going to be on the move. You're not here to rubber stamp something that has no business to be in front of you tonight. And it's not often that I... I don't think I've ever said, "Let's not meet a deadline." But you know what? It's not the end of the world if we miss it by a month. But unless you have pressure put upon the powers-to-be, it's not going to ever get readdressed. And so, you've got to keep the pressure on. And we all know as, when we were kids, that if we didn't have the pressure to do our homework, or the threat of our parents to whoop you if you didn't do the right thing, it's almost the same thing. Let's put the pressure on others to come back with the right thing, to present it to a board with the respect and dignity and the proper presentations that you all deserve and should expect. Let's raise the bar in this city. Let's expect more. Let's not plan just for 5,000. All right, let's get to the 5,000, but how much more can we go? So we have to do some infrastructure. Let's do it. We can be better. And again, the fact that you have to pass around a map, the fact that you have to do this, come on, folks. We have money for all kinds of other things. And we're paying good money for the consultants. Let's use them. Let's get the plan from 2007. Let's look and see what other people are doing, and let's move this city forward. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, for indulging my long-windedness, but I definitely wanted to convey how serious this is. And I'm disappointed that there's only two people from the public here, but we had a very, very long council meeting last night till almost midnight, and the place was still packed with residents. And so I think that's one of the reasons why there's not more people out tonight, because there is a lot of concern in the homeowner groups about this process. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Kevin. It was nice hearing from you. Yes, young lady.
Good evening, Commission. My name is Carol Prager. I live at 2509 Northeast 135th Street, and I am a 52-year resident of the city of North Miami. I'm the proud daughter of a developer. My family were builders in San Souci. We have a park in the city that bears our name, and we gave that before it was asked of anyone to give anything back. We donated concrete to the Sasso Pool at a time where nobody asked for developers to give anything back. I have very deep roots here. My family has always given back, because there's that saying that, "When you have a lot, you need to give something back." And that's where I come from. My heart is in this city. It's very distressing for me to see what's happened to my city after all these years. I am the pitch hitter for a number of community activists who were here last evening till midnight, engaging the council on issues that were very important to them. It's hard for us residents, us community activists, who volunteer our time to come before the important boards to discuss the critical issues that are facing this city. But it's what our job is. I don't think there's anything more important in this city than the Planning Commission's job. Everything else that happens comes from this commission. There's Board of Adjustments, and I believe Board of Adjustments exists because things aren't allowed. And so you have to come in here and prove your hardship, you have to ask for someone to use their experience and their knowledge to give you something that in most times you're really entitled to. I sat on Board of Adjustments. There's a feeling amongst the community activists that, for the first time in a very long time, we have a progressive council. It's very exciting for a lot of people who have lived here a long time, and it's very exciting for people who have just newly moved in here, that are newly invested with young families. They took a risk buying in North Miami. There is a neighborhood association that I want to bring to your attention called No Me Neighbors. These are young families with young children, living in central North Miami, very close to downtown, very close to West Dixie Highway and northeast Sixth Avenue. They would like nothing more than to see progress in the city, so that they know the investment they made in their home was a wise one. I've spoken to community activists on the west side at Sunkist, Alhambra, west side. They attended workshops that were put on by the consultant for this comp plan. They're excited about the possibilities of developing northwest Seventh Avenue. Northwest Seventh Avenue is an unpolished gem, absolutely. Don't let it look like Biscayne Boulevard. I've got a Denny's, I've got a Burger King, I have a Wendy's, I have a McDonald's. Gee, do I have... I have an IHOP. That's what's on Biscayne Boulevard in North Miami. Biscayne Boulevard is an address that is known worldwide. It is as famous as Peachtree Drive, Madison Avenue, Philadelphia Avenue, Ventura Boulevard, and I can go on and on. Biscayne Boulevard is known worldwide. And what do we have on our stretch of Biscayne Boulevard? It's shameful. I have to drive out of the city to get a halfway decent meal, because I don't live on fast food, and I don't think anybody else ought to either. Northwest Seventh Avenue. If you're going to go someplace big right now, I say go to northwest Seventh Avenue, and you show everybody in this county what could happen in this city. A lot of people in this city don't like change. I don't know why. I suppose by human nature, it's a scary thing to be afraid of the unknown. I'm not one of those people. I'm always marveling and always in awe of people who step up to be pioneers in any industry. I'm in awe of the people who signed up to be in a one-way spaceship to Mars. I'm in awe of people who go deep-sea diving to depths that have never been known before to discover things that we, right here on our own planet, would help mankind. There are just people here in our city who are afraid of their own shadow. Every time something comes to this city that has anything to do with change, they are the first people to show up. they are the first people to show up, torches ablaze, telling you everything that might possibly go wrong. It's just gotta stop. This is the end result. After 52 years of living in the city, this is the end result. I'm like Mr., I'm like Mr. Each. I travel a great deal. When I come home, it breaks my heart. This is my home. I wanna come home, but it's so glaring when you come back here to see what it looks like. And maybe every day when you're here, day after day, week after week, month after month, maybe you become desensitized to what it really is. But it's god-awful. And it's gotta stop. I have a great deal of respect for this commission. There are people on this commission, I, I wish I had half the knowledge, the experience, the vision. You have a lot of power. You're highly respected by a lot of residents in this city, and I would suspect you're very highly respected by the elected officials as well. Otherwise, they wouldn't have appointed you. So I'm asking each and every one of you to reach out to the members of the council before the next city meeting. And tell them what you think. Tell them your personal feelings about what was presented to you here today. It's an unacceptable piece of presentation. Let them know. They're not gonna know otherwise. Make an appointment. There will be residents in this city who will. And there are community activists and neighborhood associations who will come together into this room to go before that council and tell them that we find this unacceptable. This is unacceptable, what is being presented. It is totally and completely and absolutely unacceptable. There's nothing here, even remotely, worthy of consideration. We have a comp plan, an LDR, rules, regulations, ordinances, that discourages people. That discourages developers. That discouraged, discourages visionaries from even considering coming into our city. We have obstacles and hurdles that just blow your mind. And in today's world, the cliche that time is money is never more relevant. And when someone comes into this city and has to spend an exorbitant amount of time just to find out if they can actually do something, why bother? With the hopes of the possibility that they might get a yes. Anybody with a half a brain and a full bank account isn't gonna wanna do that because there's plenty of other places to go to. I just wanna do just one more thing, I think. Most of the things that went wrong in this city over the last 10, 15 years, in my humble opinion, were championed, if you wanna use that word, maybe that's the incorrect word, by people who just said no. We did lose Moca. We lost Smoka. We have a Moca, but we lost our Moca. And that was done by a group of people who formed a political action committee and put fear into the hearts of the residents of this city because they didn't like it. But they had the means and they had the money to form a PAC and to disseminate that information. And they certainly did. And we lost Moca. These same people tried to defeat Home Depot. They tried to defeat Johnson &amp; Wales. They tried to defeat anything that is a direct threat to what they perceive is in their best interest. No one owns Biscayne Boulevard. Not one single neighborhood in this city owns Biscayne Boulevard, Northeast 6th Avenue, West Dixie Highway, or Northwest 7th Avenue. Those main corridors belong to the residents of North Miami. And the residents that I speak to in North Miami are looking forward to progress. We're not looking for you to give us something so fantastical. We want you to be open to the challenge of something bold. Our time has come. I went to the brown, the groundbreaking of Solomia, and I joked, in the 52 years that I've lived here, I've been to four groundbreakings over there. I was hoping this was gonna be my last one. Solomia. I was shaking inside from the thrill of it because it's real. But it's gonna take them 18 to 24 months to build their infrastructure before they can even break ground on the first building. And that is, if everything goes according to plan. And then it's gonna take another two to three years before the first building goes up. So you're accounting five years. So between now and then, folks, I'm asking you to get in touch with your council and tell them what you think needs to happen between then or now and then. Because there will be people lining up, not only in Miami-Dade County, and South Florida, and Florida, but as far away as California, New York, Europe, South America. Because Solomia is, in the words of our mayor, going to put us on the map. And they're gonna wanna be here on the ground floor. They're gonna wanna be here when it costs a good amount of money to get in. This is how developers make their money. This is why they're successful, because they can recognize something and they get in on the ground floor and then they ride the wave. We've got a big wave. We have a tsunami on 151st and Biscayne Boulevard. There's so many things happening in this city that we need to grab onto. We're so, so long overdue. I'm speaking to you from my heart. Really. You need to do this. I'm gonna give, I'm gonna close with a definition. When people talk about incentives, we're always looking to give incentives to people to come into the city. We don't do that. We really don't. We don't. You know what we do? We give disincentives. And let me tell you what a disincentive is. Webster's Dictionary definition. A factor, especially a financial disadvantage that tends to discourage people from doing something. That's what we do in North Miami, and I'm asking this commission, alright, take the step. Be the first line, be our first line. Be our Team A. Get up there, deliver this thing to the council, and you will have residents and homeowners' associations behind you. I'm begging you. Don't deliver what was given to you tonight. It's insulting. It's offensive. And it's just plain wrong. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Carol. Alright, is there anyone else wishing to speak to this item? Hearing none. Public area is closed. It is time now for commission discussion. Alright, ladies and gentlemen, let's be quite candid here. The Meldron team obviously had their hands tied right at the beginning. And they didn't have a free hand to really provide the kind of leadership that realistically we were paying them to provide. Bill Prevettel has made some very practical, pragmatic recommendations that we've all heard before. And he's made them countless times. None of them were incorporated into this plan. I, I like part of what the plan did as far as sea level rise and things of that sort. That's pragmatic and essential. But we have failed to address the other issues in any substantive or creative way. The chair recognizes each of you are free for your own thoughts, and I hope you don't beat this one to death, but I would be very happy with a a motion to deny at this time. I'll start with, you wanna start first over there, Kenny?
I, I will entertain that motion to deny this.
Alright, we've got a motion from Kenny to deny. Alright, Emmanuel?
I will also entertain it.
Alright, young lady? Whose face looks absolutely beautiful, much better than mine. Go ahead.
I'll entertain a motion to deny.
Alright, sir, Mr. James. Yes or no?
Um, are we actually calling the vote right now?
Yes, we will. When you had your say and Mr. Prevettel has had his, I will call the vote.
Um, I don't have anything really more to comment.
Alright, Mr. Prevettel?
Well, I would go in line with the rest of the group. It, it would be, really, it's a travesty to pass this as it is tonight. And I'd like to point, if I could, we will be having, I believe, we'll be having discussion then of some suggestions that we'd like to see incorporated as we review it the next time, correct?
Well, see, now this is the interesting thing here. You need to understand the, the way this will play out. If we take the motion to deny and we vote on that, then it's over.
And it just goes to city council?
Or, yes, to do whatever.
That's, that's, that's dangerous.
If you want to first take a vote on your recommendations and make them part of our recommendation going forward and ask that it be incorporated before it ever gets to council, the chair can entertain that.
You know, let's, let's just back up for a second. We know.
Welcome to come back.
Yes, we, we, we put the cart before the horse. Now, the fo-
The former mayor brought out some good points. We have been asking staff for over a year to let the ball rolling. Correct? Am I correct in that?
Correct.
Okay. And here we are at the last juncture, spinning our wheels. And this is not the way, it should've come to us months ago. We should've looked at that map and said, "This is what we want. A to B to C to D to E." Now, I guess I say, "Let's turn this down. Let's have another meeting in a couple of weeks where we can all come back, give our thoughts and say, 'This is what it should be,' meet with the consultant, and go forward." I mean, I don't wanna shoot myself in the foot, but this, the way it stands right now, no. I would not pass this. This is nonsense.
Alright, Kenny, what about the recommendations that Bill made?
I would, I would incorporate them, yes.
You would adopt the recommendations?
I'm sorry, as a point of order, may I suggest that if you're rejecting this plan tonight, can you please articulate on the record the main reasons why? Give something to city council or justification to perhaps rework this plan.
We asked for density. There was no density increase. We asked for height increase. There's no height increase. We, 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 there were things that we spoke about on the record, the three points that Mr. Prevettel pointed out about incorporating parking spaces underneath the high-rises, okay? Things that I have spoken about over the years about incentives in, in, in the economic portion of this plan with regards to giving people tax incentives on property tax. That's not in here, okay? Yeah, we can add all of these, but we're supposed to do this tonight. This is preposterous. There's about 50 recommendations that we can have. I wanna look at that map and I wanna take different areas of the city and change it. Northwest 7th Avenue. We wanna see the height go up to 30 stories. I don't see that here, okay?
I, I just wanna be able to include.
I, I, I articulate, you know?
I just wanna be able to include in the legislative item, the ordinance that's going to council, the reasons why this body, yes, no, and I appreciate that. Thank you, sir.
In simple, in simple form, and I, I think you'll appreciate this, it is severely lacking. It is an incomplete presentation by every stretch of the imagination. It is completely lacking. And therefore, how can we possibly vote on something that, that isn't there? It really isn't there. Uh, in every, every aspect.
And, and if I may, we were told the big thing was, and the arguments that we've had over the last couple of months, or discussions, not arguments, that the infrastructure would not support an increase in density. And we find out tonight, thanks to the consultant, that we have a couple of experts that came in here tonight. We heard from our city manager, who was the public works director, that yes, in fact, the probability is there that the infrastructure will support an increase in density. We don't have that in here. The clock is ticking. It's quarter after 10:00. And, and, and we're supposed to come up with ideas? No, this is-
Question. I'm sorry. So, at this point, let's say it gets denied and now you say it has to go to the board?
Goes to the council.
It go, I'm sorry, it goes to the council and then the council would then decide where they're going to go from here?
And we wanna have-
Is that what happens from here?
You're, you're under section of the LDR is 3-1106. You are to adopt, adopt with recommendations or reject. And whichever way this board goes, this is what I was asking for, the justification, the findings of fact that I'm going to include on, on your desires on that piece of legislation so that the, the city council can make a well-informed decision and take it from there.
Well, if we adopt it with recommendations, can we put timeline on, timelines on our recommendations?
It'll go to council. It's up to council.
Is there any way of stopping it so that it comes back to us before it goes to council? We'd like to, this needs to-
That would be one of your recommendations.
I, I would like to see us meet in a couple of more weeks with our recommendations, meet with the consultant, meet with staff, and, and get everything that we want in here.
I, I would like for us to have a say-so. I don't, I, I'm not to recant, but tell you what I am recanting because I would like for us to have a, a solid say-so in, in, in this project. And I, I think if we shoot it down now, I think we kill our chances of getting anything.
Also, the other consideration is that the LeBron James of the planning world, they have to be given the opportunity to, remember, you know, these, these amendments, the comprehensive plan amendments are, have to be supported by data analysis. So it's, it's nothing, it's not that we just, well, we want height over here and density over there. It has to be, they have to go back. They have to go back and do work. And then, at that point-
Yes, and we should put that into the plan now, then they can do the analysis later.
May I, may I propose that we, we-
You can't.
Rethink this and, and kinda maybe revote?
We haven't voted yet.
Okay, so it's not official?
No, we're taking a sounding.
Can I, may I?
This is still the realm of, of commission discussion. Yes, Mr. Prevettel, keep it short.
Okay. First of all, I, I'd like to extend my appreciation to former Mayor Kevin Burns and community activist Carol Prager for their very insightful and articulate input on this. And I wish everybody in the city would've had an opportunity to hear what you were saying. Right on, right on the mark, absolutely on the mark. As I, as I look at the plan, isn't it interesting that we're, we're dealing with these heights and densities and that the I was told that Biscayne Landing is, and I think it is like 25 stories or so, but isn't it interesting that the highest I can find on the map in the legend is 110 feet and it's not the same color as Biscayne Landing? We're, we're even too ashamed to admit what's going on at that location. So this is, you know, in itself, it's inaccurate as it stands. It's like we don't wanna admit there's even something going on to 25 stories, our, you know, the giveaway of a century that we did. So that's not in there. But let me please also clarify. I, I handed out that piece of paper with the, with the three, with the three items, right? That, that followed the initial presentation of really 12 points. And the three were just condensed and the most implementable. Let me be very clear, let me be very clear. Those three items are not for going forward. Not by any stretch of the imagination. Those three items are just to slow down the backsliding that we have in this city. If you take a residential neighborhood with 100 homes and then you build one of those 100, if you're lucky to get one of those 100 rebuilt, all of a sudden, you've you've gained, you know, you've cut out a 50-year home, you've gained 50 years there. Meanwhile, the other 99 homes have gotten a year older. You're now 99 or 100 years older. You're still falling back and backsliding on this. This is just to stop that, that process. There is a whole second phase that is just to try to get par, get even with maybe some other communities. And, and that's what, you know, just to, just to try to equalize some of it, to get in some of the, the retailers, to maybe get one or two high-end something in here, just to get even. And then there were components on the third part to go, "Wow, we actually have an imaginative, imaginative idea and we'll implement that." I mean, that's so far beyond. Our, our council and, and the people think that we're gonna all of a sudden, you know, magic wand is gonna come by in downtown and this, that, it's gonna be so wonderful. We haven't even stopped the deterioration yet. And that's all this was. It's, it's not forward progress.
Alright, Bill, we understand that. We, we need to make some decisions.
And I'd like to add-
I don't, I don't want us to reduce the city to just a bunch of high-rises. because just last week I was downtown, I can't remember the place that, that we were eating at, but PF Chang's downtown. And we were walking to the parking garage where our car was parked, and there was this two-story housing complex just sitting in the middle of like five high rises. It was so oddly placed, and you can tell that it was just one of the structures that withstood whatever changes were going on in, in that area. So, we wanna make sure that as we make these changes, we're not just focused on these massive buildings as if this, this city is going to turn into town, uh, uh, Town, Times Square. You know, I, I would like to see other creative, innovative infrastructure in our city as well, as well as it being aesthetically pleasing, environmentally friendly, so on and so forth. I don't want us to keep focusing on these high rises. Let's focus on the innovate, the innovation, the creative pieces that we want to infuse in our city.
Well, what's, please articulate the incentive. How do we, how do we do that? Because we, we would all like that.
Well, first of all, we can consult with other, other cities that have been able to do that and find out how do they make that happen? What consultants did they use? What, what studies did they conduct? How well are the businesses doing? What businesses can, what businesses can we attract that are like those businesses, however, that set us apart from them so that we too, so that they can continue getting whatever economic benefits they, they're getting, and then we too can get whatever economic benefits we're getting. For example, if they have a really cool Nike outlet. Okay, well, why not come up with a really cool Nike outlet that sells apparel? They have the shoe version, we have the apparel version. That way, it's a win-win situation. We're not, we're somewhat piggybacking off of it, off of their idea, but just making it our own, you know? I, I think there's so much that we can do with this city, but I don't want us to reduce it to a mini version of Times Square. We want to keep our city a friendly, inviting, family-oriented city as well as it being a, a buzzing, um, um, set of infrastructures that's inviting to businesses and, and, and so on and so forth. We want the banks. We want the car dealerships. We want this, we want that. We, we want all those good things, but we wanna make sure that we're, we're placing them strategically and we're not crowding the city with these massive infrastructures.
Well, the plan gives us areas. The plan gives us areas for development. Our, our problem is gross inconsistencies in building heights in some of these things, and the plan doesn't really fix that. The incentives that we would like to see don't seem to be adopted. The plan didn't adopt the issue on the parking garages, and we've been talking about that here for two years. Removing the disability of the parking garage, and that's not in the plan. I, it, we all made those statements at all those public workshops. What was the point of the workshops? The, the concrete things that were suggested were never put into the plan. I believe the direction to the planners was far too conservative from staff for whatever political reasons may have existed. But I concur, this is a bad plan, and now we have two choices. We basically can make recommendations and send it forward, or we can turn it down. Either way, it will go to City Council. I don't believe City Council really understands the mathematical principles that Mr. Prevattel has laid out that influence development. I don't think they really have a handle on that. I doubt that City Council has had the opportunity to, to get involved in this process. I didn't see many council members at any of the public workshops. The mayor came to some, but the other members generally did not. And so, that raises some questions about where they stand on these issues. But I, I think there needs to be a more structured input from the Planning Commission with time to absorb this and structured input from City Council, and then more structured input from the residents. I know when we did this revision seven years ago, and I attended all of those sessions, we, we battered this plan around from one end of the city to the other before we moved forward. And what we built then was the Cadillac of land development regulations for its time. And the, the consultant is right, the economic downturn just resulted in nothing really happening. But the, the groundwork was there. Now, we have an opportunity to look at this again with seven years of experience and fine-tune it, and none of the fine-tuning that's been recommended was ever incorporated into the plan. And so, I, I, I don't see the merits on it. Yes.
I seen the consultant trying to give us a little input. Why don't we get to here?
Go ahead. Let's, let's hear.
I just wanted to make a, two, two comments if I, Commissioner Eich, you had said, just go ahead and put in the height and density, and we'll do the analysis later. Just a reminder that I can't do that. The Department of Economic Opportunity, the Land Planning Agency, will not accept that unless I can demonstrate what the impacts are of the additional density. They don't care about the height. The other thing I would just note and observation, and I realize, I understand the timing of this. I hear you talking about sending it forward with a few recommendations, and yet I hear additional conversations about really stepping back and taking a comprehensive look and having some dialogue, as the chairman just said, and, and so forth. The document that's before you this evening is to address technical requirements to do an ear-based amendment. It's not, the, the, the state does not require you to completely update your comprehensive plan and address issues of concern such as redevelopment or height and density. We're addressing technical things, changes to statutory requirements and things like that. Perhaps another option, only as a suggestion, would be to send this forward noting your objection to it and with a recommendation to step back and take a bigger look. In other words, I'm suggesting it's almost two separate processes, technical ear-based amendments, and then another look, comprehensive look at the comprehensive plan. Does that make sense?
Yeah, again, you know, the city's free to amend its comprehensive plan based on local conditions, so.
Basically, we can just address the, the statutory requirement at this juncture.
That's what I'm saying. And then, rather than rushing through and thinking you're gonna take a, a comprehensive look and have more dialogue here and have maybe a joint workshop with your council and maybe do some community input and do it in a month or two, won't result in a plan that's gonna be satisfactory. It takes more time than that.
How, how about the-
Incidentally, the gentleman from the water program, you guys can leave, I think. All right? We've kept you here long enough.
Can I, can I ask the council, can we, or council, can we request that some, some modifications and, and input from now be, be given to the consultants, and we meet back in two weeks? So that we, if, if everybody would agree, I think it would benefit the entire city, and that's just a base.
I don't think two weeks would be-
Well, we, we, it, it's something better than nothing. It's something better than nothing.
I mean, they're just gonna put any, I, I believe they're just gonna put anything together at that point just to satisfy us. I mean, I think it needs more time.
Unfortunately, I don't-
We're gonna miss everything. It's gonna be, from our experience, this is, we'll go nowhere. There'll be no changes. At least there's a chance of getting something in these two weeks. The mayor has already approached me and wanted to get together with Meldron Associates sometime this coming week, knows that there are these concerns, is very much on top of it. I invite everybody else to be able to meet with the mayor and, and, or anybody, their council people regarding this to give their input. As I tried to stress before, this is not, what I was proposing is just the very, very basic elements to stop going back. There are probably a hundred things that could be incorporated in this plan to start us from actually moving forward. We haven't touched on any of those. Kenny said the same thing, yeah.
You know, I would, you know, at this point, I would just turn it down with the stipulation that we would like to meet again with the consultant and, and give additional input, or, give me another word, instead of turning it down, let's, huh?
Defer it.
No, I mean, just hold it back. In other words, this plan-
It needs more work.
Yeah, let's defer this for a couple of weeks where we can get some more input. That's the word. You got it.
It would be seriously dangerous for us to just let it go out there and float forward. It, it, it will back, you know, it'll be the worst result. It really would be the worst.
I, I, I think, do we have it all nailed down, signed and sealed? I, I don't want it to go forward.
Well, I, I, I agree that if we send it forward-
Why can't we defer it?
It goes forward with our stamp of approval, and I-
No.
No.
Can't see approving this.
No.
The way it's, it's presented, no, no criticism to the consultant directly. Their hands were tied at the start, and they were given very narrow, unrealistic directions. So, gentlemen, we need to come up with a, a solution here.
I, I would recommend that we, we turn it down at this point, or maybe the verbiage should be that the Planning Commission has requested that this plan be deferred for an additional month till we can get with our consultant. Because there's, and you can articulate everything that we brought out that's not in there.
I, I'm going by the unambiguous. I'm, I'll, I'm gonna read the unambiguous.
I'm sorry.
Correct.
I, I'm going to read the unambiguous code section to which you're bound under.
Okay.
Okay, and that is, you shall, and this is shall, it's not may, but shall, make a written recommendation to the City Council with regard to whether the proposed amendments should be adopted, adopted with conditions, or rejected. That's why I was asking this commission for, to articulate the reasons for its rejection. Very, very unambiguous, and, and we're bound by it until it's rewritten or amended.
What about, as I said, incompleteness? Why can't it be deferred, however long down, whether it's two weeks, a month?
You can reject it because A, B, C, D, E, and, and it is the desire of this commission to do this and that.
Okay, then why don't we put that in?
That's what you need. Now you're disposing of the item and you're rendering your analysis and rendition of your conclusions to the City Council.
We can reject it and statewide, we're rejecting it.
Exactly, and you're, you're-
And that we, and with the-
No, I, I think we need-
I don't know. I, I can't, this, you're asking me to tell you what the mayor and city council will do. I really, I would be speculative.
That sounds much too much like it's gonna go back to the, to the council and it's gonna fly through. If we had the, on request of community planning and development, our representative and our consultants, and they requested a delay so that additional work can be done on this, and say, we're incomplete in our presentation, that would get us off the hook, and we just say, we're just, what do you call it?
You're asking our consultant, yeah, I, I, I think that's, you're, you're delegating your, your duties, your function.
Well, the council does that all the time. If something's incomplete, they send it back.
Mr. Chairman?
And, and, and thank God they do that. You know, thank God they do that.
That, that is, that is a common sense approach. As William Jennings Bryan once said, counselor, and I always quote him, when common sense and the law collide, let's always hope that common sense prevails. We can work this out, but if we just gonna say yes or no, I would put that caveat in there that the Planning Commission requests that this comes back and so we, we can work, and, and give the City Council a finalized plan that we're all happy with.
That sounds reasonable. We can-
It's, it's, it's-
Yeah. It's a way of rejecting it and saying it needs to come back to us for further study, and we state the reasons why. And the, and the, the chair recognizes all of the line items that Kenny Eich enumerated, and the chair recognizes the suggestions that Bill Prevattel made, not just tonight, but numerous times over the last year that have been totally ignored and not incorporated into this as valid reasons for saying that this plan needs more work. All right? Is that, if that, if that is sufficient, then we reject for those reasons, and we recommend and request that this be brought back to us when these issues can be better addressed.
I, I think that would comply with the spirit of the, of section three dash eleven oh six.
And let's comply with the spirit. I'm all in favor of the spirit world. All right, if the chair calls for a motion adopting that language.
I, I'm, I'm still very concerned. This is not, nothing is set. We, this is still a flag in the, in the, in the wind.
Yes, but that's the best we can come up with.
No, we might be able to get, we might be able to, community, community planning and development to agree and with, with our consultants to, to make some changes, right, as, to be-
I, I can't ask it to be delayed. It would be a violation of my contract.
Can you, can you make the modifications as a minimum, and also any, any other suggestion, not just these three?
I wanna look at that map.
It would have to go, it would have to go forward to the City Council with your recommendations for those changes. The policy body would have to give me that direction, but we can carry the recommendations forward.
Okay. I, I'd like to, if I may, ask something that we didn't, I know that there's a section on the, the trees that luckily we'd, we'd pushed, and there's more emphasis on that. Is there any particular requirement on trees and plantings? Requiring somebody to have trees and plantings as opposed to just good intentions?
It would be in the, it would be in your zoning code.
Yeah. All right, look, there's, there's a motion pending. Can we get a second?
I second.
All right, motion made and seconded that we're rejecting for all the reasons enumerated, and we're asking the City Council to reject and to return back to the Planning Commission for further review. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Oh, carried, it's over. Thank you. Now, our next meeting is going to be?
July seventh.
July the seventh. Oh, and young lady, we do thank you for what you're doing. We understand your hands were poorly tied at the start. We don't believe the contract was well-construed. You're off the hook on that one.
Oh, I, I wasn't concerned about that. It was, my contract was a narrow focus to address statutory requirements and not the broader concerns that this commission has, so.
And it needs, and it needed to be broadened.
I understand. Thank you.
Having said that, and staff, we thank staff for what they've done tonight. We thank the public that came to speak. We thank the assistance of the deputy city attorney, Roland Galdos, for, for his continued great patience here this evening. Finally, I wanna thank each of our commissioners for your insights, your positive critiques.
Welcome back, sir. Welcome back.
Well, thank you. It's, it's good to be back. Then if there's nothing further, we are adjourned.
Meanwhile, I think everybody should keep working on their ideas.
Yes, I agree.